Good evening and welcome to the November 21st meeting of the Town Council. If you'd kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, for announcements this evening, I just have upcoming, no, town offices will be closed Thursday, November 28th, and Friday, November 29th, in observance of Thanksgiving. And the transfer station will also be closed on Thanksgiving Day. The Merrimack Town Council would like to extend our sincere sympathies to the family and friends of William Bill Cummings, who passed away on November 9th at the age of 66. Bill was always active in our community, and he took on many roles in local organizations, to include the Merrimack Chamber of Commerce, the Rotary Club of Merrimack, the Merrimack School District, as well as a valued volunteer member of the Town Center Committee from June 2016 to January 2023. And Bill was a wonderful man, so if we could have a moment to sign, so I'd appreciate it. Thank you. We have upcoming meetings Thursday, December 5th, Thursday, December 19th, Wednesday, those are two regular meetings, all both 7:00 here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Wednesday, January 8th, at 6:30 PM, we have a budget meeting also here. And lastly, Thursday, January 9th, at 7:00 PM, we have another regular meeting all here in the Matthew Thornton Room.
Paul. Thank you, Mr. Chair. One other meeting is that this Saturday, November 23rd, the Town Council will be meeting at Twin Bridge Park to do a, Twin Bridge Road, sorry, to do a sight walk at the end of that road. Property tax bills were mailed out this week and are due to, due on Thursday, December 19th. If you have not received your tax bill yet, please reach out to the Town Clerk Tax Collector's Office at 603-424-3651, or you can visit the Town's website, merrimacknh.gov, and click on the property tax, click on the kiosk for property taxes on the Merrimack Resources to look up and pay your property taxes online. The annual food drive is taking place from now through December 31st. Non-expired canned food or non-perishable items are accepted in the following locations: Highway and Equipment Maintenance Complex at 76 Turkeyill Road, Central Fire Station at 432 Daniel Webster Highway, Police Department at 31 Babuza Lake Road, Library at 470 Daniel Webster Highway, Public Works Administration and Community Development in the lower level of Town Hall at 6 Babuza Lake Road, the upper level of Town Hall, also at 6 Babuza Lake Road, Transfer Station at the end of the Recycle Building at 1 Faren Road. This is to help our neighbors and all of the food stays in our community to help our residents. Some successive donations include toiletries, hygiene products, applesauce, juice, boxes, canned soups, macaroni and cheese, macaroni, canned tuna, pasta, canned fruits and vegetables, crackers, cereal, bottled water, baby formula, diapers, and baby wipes. Donations will be collected and brought to two food pantries in Merrimack, St. John Newman and St. James United Methodist Church. I want to thank the people who already donated and left canned goods and other non-perishable items at the upper level of 6 Babuza Lake Road over the last couple of days. Been bringing them down to Dawn in DPW so she can collect them downstairs. It's just overwhelming how quick that bucket in the top floor fills up with people bringing stuff, and I do appreciate that. Lastly, the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Adjustments are seeking volunteers to serve on each board. The Planning Board currently has three vacant positions, and the Zoning Board of Adjustment has one vacant position. Serving on the Planning Board or Zoning Board of Adjustment is a great way to give back to your community with a low to moderate time commitment. Interested residents should contact Becky Thomas in the Town Manager's Office at 603-424-2331, or Community Development Department at 603-424-3531 for more information about the responsibilities involved in each board and position. Thank you.
Didn't you say light time commitment, right?
Life, light.
Light, that's right. I'm emphasizing light.
Light, yes.
Thanks, Paul.
Is it possible to get the zoning and planning board positions on social media?
Yes, we will work on getting all our volunteer boards that we have openings for, but we'll definitely make those two a priority and get them out.
Thank you. And if we could share a link from that, so the rest of us, we could try to socialize that as wide as possible.
Yes, we will.
Thanks.
Early next week, we'll send that out.
Thanks, Andy. Good idea. All right, comments from the press and public? Anybody like to rest council, and I see no one coming forward. We have no recognitions, resignations, or retirements, so we have no appointments or public hearings. Updates from our legislative delegation? There's nobody here. Nancy?
Nope, quiet week.
Quiet, I thought it might be. Paul, nothing?
Other than filing bills. Tomorrow, our bills have to be submitted by end of day. The Senate will have a different timeline, but that's pretty much where everybody's been busy at. We're not back till December to be sworn in.
Great. Okay, thanks, Paul. And I've received nothing. Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. Merrimack TV will soon announce their live at Merrimack High School winter varsity sports coverage calendar, following Merrimack TV on social media, to be the first to know which Tomahawk games will be live this season. And they have a pretty, from what Nick showed me as a draft, they have a pretty robust season of calling sports games. And it's great because we actually have another gentleman from the high school who wants to do basketball, and then we have a volleyball and basketball player who's going to be shadowing Grace, because that's what she wants to do when she's in college as well. So it's a really great opportunity for local high school kids, if this is the career path they want to take, to see what a media center looks like in production of events and programs. So it's great. And Nick is always willing to give, and his staff, Nick and his staff, Justin and Grace are always willing to give back to the community and take time with anybody who's interested.
Excellent. All right, thank you, Paul. We have no consent agenda this evening, so first item under New Business is the Effie Everett Turnpike Widening Project and Noise Barrier Letter Discussion. We'd asked the Town Manager to come up with something for us, which is in our folder, and I hope everybody had a chance to read it and have input. I just had a couple of small things, and I don't want to be the guy who's the grammar guy or anything, because God knows I can mess that up, but what I was thinking, Paul, is the first line, the Merrimack Town Council, can turn to the attention of the Merrimack Town Council that the noise associated with the turnpike traffic in the area of Vista Way and Kittredge Lane located, that I think you should insert that possibly, if anybody thinks I'm mistaken, I'm good with that, too.
Could you repeat that? My shorthand isn't that great.
Yep. It's brought to the attention of the Merrimack Town Council that the noise associated with the turnpike traffic, Effie Everett Turnpike Traffic, whatever's.
Yep.
Then you go down to the end of that paragraph, and it says included in the scope project. That's probably fine by itself, but I didn't know if you meant scope of the project. And then asking our representatives, I didn't know if you want legislative delegation, but again, it all works.
Yeah, that's good. Does that include?
Which brings me to the next thing. If tomorrow's the last day for filing, you guys might be busy. We got to get this out tonight.
I think that's a good idea. Can I just add? We're going to get really picky about the letter. We just have to capitalize L for lane, Kittredge Lane.
Oh.
Line two.
Oh, lane.
Yep.
So when would the first opportunity for legislation be? I guess, Nancy.
Yeah, that's a, probably because of the tight time constraint, I don't know if it will be able to get in this legislation. However, the real issue is, and I don't understand the makings of policies and things of that sort at the state level, but the real issue is that this comes from a New Hampshire Department of Transportation policy that states, it's not written in the law anywhere about this 1,500, the 1,500 square foot benefited household that works towards the cost ratio. That is in a policy that was written in 2016 from the New Hampshire DOT. It might be easier for our legislators to just increase during the budget, and I don't know how they would do that, but do an amendment to the budget to include sound barriers for this project? And I don't know how they would do that, since it's turnpike money versus non-turnpike money. The inner workings of that, I would leave up to our legislators. And I know that there's a senator just to the north of us in Bedford who's having similar issues with noise barriers as well. So I don't know how this all would play out up there.
Very good. Nancy?
Thanks. I know Representative Rosemary Rong was the one that brought this to our attention, and I know, I've talked with her, and she has talked with Bill Boyd as well, which is trying to strategically figure the best to, sometimes things, it doesn't matter if a bill gets filed, but sometimes it matters who files it, where it comes from, at what point in the legislative process the most opposition may show up. So I think Paul made a really good point. Denise Ritchardy's a senator from Concord, from, excuse me, from Bedford, and she has had, she'll be dealing with the same issue. I don't know if it would be best if she and maybe our new senator worked together on that, because ultimately, what we've seen happen lately is that we can work really hard and get things through 400 people in the House, and there's 24 people in the legislature that people don't, lobbyists don't even wait, don't even come to our hearing. They just figure it's easy to convince 24 people in 400. So that might be a strategy. And the other thing, I know when Rosemary was considering it, she was talking to Bill, because if it went to a committee, it would go to his. So I'm not sure that in the next 24 hours, it's going to be worked out, but, you know, we will have another opportunity. And as you said, Paul, you know, it's around DOT rulemaking that, excuse me, Paul, yeah. So I think this letter would be helpful, and I think maybe the best people might not be us. You know, I mean, we're certainly willing to try, but you don't want to, it's something to be an exercise in futility when it might be, have a better chance if we have some collaboration, maybe with two senators from the area, so.
Another reason why it should say legislators and not just representatives.
Yeah. What will happen is that that citation, Honorable Representative, each one would get a personalized letter, and then we'd say, Honorable Senator, we'd get his own personalized letter, and we, finally, we'd sign all eight of them and nine of them, and we'll get them emailed and officially. The other thing, the other question I have at this time, once again, because we're in that kind of crossover period where we have newly elected, but they haven't really taken, officially raised their right hand, is how does that work up there with the representatives?
What I was going to say is, the advantage to, maybe to the Senate doing this, is that their filing period doesn't even start right now. They've got much more time to do this than we do. We've got till tomorrow, the end, 4:00 tomorrow. As far as new, that's the other thing. When we're filing a bill, we have new legislators who have not been sworn in yet. We have names, but I think it's the fourth we're sworn in. And, you know, we can list people as cosponsors, but we don't know who's going to be on what committee, and so there's, you know, the time, the time crunch is really, I think, what sort of the challenge is. So personally, I'm seeing it as probably more beneficial if it becomes a Senate bill, but, you know, not to say that any of us would be happy, very happy to co-sponsor and help work it through the House, if that's the determination.
Yeah, it was just your comment that it closed tomorrow. It was, you know, I wasn't even contemplating all the other paths that it might take, but...
So I think really the first thing is for the council to approve this. We'll work on getting it finalized for signature, and we'll get it out probably next week to everybody. And, you know, like Nancy has said, is that we could, they could work it on the back alleys, back avenues, not back alleys, but back avenues, up in Concord with everything, once people sign up. And it might be best coming through the Senate, because I know, Nancy, when we met with Senator Ritchardy from Bedford, she mentioned it for, that she's going to need our help and the, our help with a bill that she has planned.
That's right.
So I don't know if she already has the bill or not. I haven't talked into, I haven't talked to her.
It did sound like that, though, I agree with you.
So, you know, if she has one, maybe we don't do competing bills, and we can add on to her bill.
Do you need a motion for the letter?
To accept it, yes.
So be, so I'm moved.
Second.
Pushed by Nancy.
With changes.
Harrington, and second by Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion on the letter? See none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, 7000. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Next item under New Business, the council will consider the acceptance of an outdoor lighting, of outdoor lighting perspectives of New Hampshire's offer to decorate and light up Abbey Griffin Park Bandstand and Christmas Tree at no cost to the town for the Town's tree lighting ceremony on December 8th, 2024 pursuant to RSA 31,95E and Charter Article 8, Section 15. And this is the company that has done the Police Department accent lighting?
Yep, the accent lighting at the Police Department. Talking to Matt Kisparius, Parks and Rec Director, he basically said that they reached out to him, and we'll put up the lights around the tree and decorate the gazebo down at Abbey Griffin Park for Christmas. And what Matt said is the best part of it is that they'll come back in January and take all this stuff down, so he doesn't have to sit out there for two hours freezing. So he, it's a very generous offer, and, you know, just another, a local business that wants to give back to the community.
Paul, does there have to be a dollar amount on this?
To be honest with you, it's, I don't, we couldn't put a dollar amount on it because of what they're going to be doing. We don't have a dollar amount, so it's more like they're just donating the lights and then going forward with it. So it's probably going to be less than the, I don't even know how much it would be, what people pay now for them to do houses and stuff like that.
Okay, no, Nancy.
I would just like to thank Jay Graham and his wife, Ashley, for this offer. They are very helpful in a lot of ways in town, that one of these sort of unsung heroes. They help us out with Reeds Across America every year, too, delivering and those kinds of things. So it's just a great example of community members that become involved that really, you know, people don't know that, how things happen, but thank you to Jay and Ashley and everybody that's willing to help out in something like this. I think it's great.
Wonderful. Any further discussion? See none, the pleasure of the council. Nancy Harrington refusing again, is that what I sensed?
Make a motion.
Nancy, you're just going to call it out.
Go ahead, Nancy. I'll do it.
Okay. I'd like to move a motion to accept the offer of outdoor lighting perspectives of New Hampshire to decorate and light up Abbey Griffin Park Bandstand and Christmas Tree at no cost to the town for the Town's tree lighting ceremony on December 8th, 2024.
Motion by Nancy Murphy.
Second.
Second by Andy.
Pursuant to RSA 31,0 E, Charter Article 8, 15.
95.
Yep.
Is that good?
Did you?
It's fine with me.
Friendly amendment by the Town Manager on Nancy's motion, and Andy second. We're good with that?
Yeah.
All right. There's no further discussion? With gratitude, we take the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, 7000. Thanks to the Grahams. That's very nice.
And we will make sure we send a nice thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Item 200, New Business, the council will consider the Sewer Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund withdrawal request of up to $75,940 for an engineering analysis for sewer pipe relocation at the Executive Park Drive, brought forth by the current Effie Everett Turnpike Widening Project. And we have Dawn here this evening to make our presentation.
So just a little background, the Effie, during, in the Effie Everett Turnpike, we have four or five sewer crossings that go underneath the Effie Everett Turnpike. Last year, we came before the council over by Dumpling Brook to ask for some money to expand the sleeve. Dawn is here tonight. We're on the other end of the Effie Everett, down by Exit 11, where the old Hilton was, and on Executive Park Drive, we have another sewer line that comes across in that area of the Effie Everett, and Dawn is here to discuss that portion of it tonight.
Hi, Dawn.
Good evening. I remembered. Just to put you in perspective of where we are at in town, this is the Greeley Street and then the Continental Boulevard, excuse me, Amherst Road. This is the lights here, and the Amherst Road goes towards the west and north, and then we have Executive Park Drive. And at the end of Executive Park Drive, used to be the movie theater is where that's at, and we've got a new hotel in there now. Originally, there was the old hotel, and when they went in, they put in a sewer crossing underneath the Effie Everett, and they did it temporary, and they put it through a 60-inch culvert underneath the Effie Everett, so it's suspended along the top of this culvert, which is failing. So the state, instead of ripping up this culvert, is going to block the ends of this culvert and fill it with a flowable fill so that it doesn't collapse. And in doing so, they, we need to move or make arrangements for our sewer pipe. This is where the pipe is, the red line is where the pipe is today, in that culvert. What they're going to do is to block that culvert, because it's in such poor condition, and move it, and reroute the brook to where it used to be, down where this blue line is. And that kind of leaves our sewer pipe. Plus, if you look at the grading in through here, you can see it's quite steep on all the sides. They're going to be adding a lane, so they're going to be filling more. We have sewer manholes right along through here, which are already fairly deep, and now we're going to be adding another 10 feet of fill over the top, so we're looking at a sewer manhole that's 30 feet deep. It's hard to get to, it's almost impossible to get to these. In order to get to them, we have to basically come in off the Effie Everett, go down a one-to-one slope, and hopefully, with all the equipment, be able to, but it's not ideal. So what we're asking the state is, what do we want to do with this sewer pipe? So that's what we're here tonight. This was, it's a poor picture, but this was the original way back whenever you can see it comes, this is Executive Park Drive, it comes through Executive Park Drive, through the culvert, and then down and out. And this, if I could blow, if I could, oops, I don't know how to make it zoom. But anyway, the manholes are in there, the pipes are in there. We need to put a sleeve in somewhere or do something else. In the sewer master plan, we have provisions in the future for a pump station. You know, what do we do in the meantime? Because obviously, we're not going to get pump station in before they work on this part. So in order to do the analysis for all of this, we're asking Wright Pierce, who does our sewer work, to do some analysis, some more analysis. We've given them all the information that we have, and they're going to provide us with some different options and what the best way to go is. So that's that study for the $76,000, and yes, we went back and forth, and Paul will attest that we got them down from their original costs. Yes.
And we asked them to look at all options. We asked them to look at a pump station, look at putting a sleeve in underneath that we can work through. We've asked them to look at a sleeve, we've asked them to look at every option out there to let us know if everything will work out. So it was not, it's not just a, oh, give us what we already currently have, so.
Jennifer.
Maybe a silly question, but the state doesn't have any financial responsibility since they're doing the widening?
No. So if private utilities, they consider this a private utility, crosses their land, we are responsible by law. So you will find in the future, when they go to do these two bridges for Babuza Lake Road and Wire Road, the tables are turned. So while they're working on our roads, and if they run into our utilities, they then have to pay for our utilities. But when we have a utility on their land, we have to pay for the, any changes within that utility.
And how it was explained to both Dawn and I by the state, because I asked that same question, is that you maintain Wire Road, you maintain Babuza Lake Road, so if we do anything because you maintain it, it's on us. I said, well, what about the highway? Can't you do the same thing? And they said, no, we maintain the highway, it's on you.
That's why the regulations.
That's right.
Well, Continental Boulevard, we did repairs, where they're now doing the more, further construction, and they had crushed our sewer line. Even though they crushed it, we had to, we had to repair that, we had to pay for that.
Yes, and we still are, we're changing out some of the manhole, the manhole covers, so that's our responsibility. We asked them to do that, so that we had the new covers that we're now using for those. They did not have to touch our sewer manholes, we were lucky this time on that particular intersection, so.
Yeah. I mean, we had the MVD, they had to do waterline repairs, I think it was Tinker Road a number of years ago, and they had to do them, and they didn't want to do them, but it's the way it is, I guess, so. All right. Anybody have any questions? Comments, thoughts? Nancy?
Well, it sounds like it's not a consideration, it's something that has to be done, period. So I'll make a motion to approve the Sewer Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund Withdrawal Request of up to $75,940 for an engineering analysis for sewer pipe relocation of Everett Park Drive.
Executive.
Executive Park, sorry, whatever. Brought forth, that's why I shouldn't be doing the motion. Brought forth by the current Effie Everett Turnpike Widening Project.
Second.
Motion by Nancy.
And for Paul to be able to sign any documents necessary.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Jennifer. I have a question, because you brought it up, and it's not really important, I'm sure for tonight, but why, what is a pump station going to do in this situation? Why would you need a pump station? It's flowing, I mean...
Because it's at a low point. It's deep, this is all very, very deep in the ground. The pump station would bring it and bring it out to the intersection of the horse, Greeley and the Amherst Road and Continental. It would bring it out to those pipes there, which then lead directly into our...
It's going uphill.
Instead of traveling under the, okay, I didn't follow that.
Correct. We have another crossing on Greeley Street.
Right.
That goes underneath, it's a 24-inch pipe that then goes into our interceptor line.
So we might pump to that.
Further down, yep.
It might be a better solution in the long run, because you could pump up and then out and then down. We have to see cost of how much that would cost us.
Okay. I didn't follow that train of why, so I'm good.
Sorry.
I don't know if it's a good idea.
It's hard, sometimes I get so, I mean, so involved into...
Everybody else got it, I was the only one, so you didn't.
No. The thing is, is that we can control the cost on the pump station. If we decide to put a sleeve in underneath the turnpike, we're at the mercy of the bid of the state. So their contractor, who might win the project, bids X amount of money, we're at the mercy of that, and we really can't negotiate back and forth with it. While if we look at doing a pump station, that would be on us. We would negotiate, we could negotiate contract with the individual and have more, but it's half dozen one-six of another. We have to... We have to see the cost of what's going to be most cost effective in that area.
So when I met with the state a week and a half or two weeks ago, um, they kept adding more and more costs to all of this, if we decided to go underneath. Oh, we've got to do this, and we have to do that, and that'll be an added cost over here, and it'll be, and you start adding up all those little costs, and they, they were significant.
Okay. Tom?
So, thanks for your question, Finley. So is there a pump station associated with that line now anyway? Because it's so deep? How does it intersect with the, with the main line when it's that deep?
It goes right under and down to Daniel Webster.
It's gravity fed.
It's gravity fed.
It's gravity fed, even though it's so deep there, and you can come up the road a little bit to Amherst Street and, and the cost of maintaining and running a pump station for the next twenty-five, fifty years.
I don't have that off the top of my head.
That's got to be part of the equation, right? Versus going ahead and letting it be gravity fed through.
Yeah, right. It's a lot of different questions and concerns.
But this is going to put them all on the table, so we know what we've got for cost when it comes time.
So that's what the seventy-five thousand is going to buy us.
Yeah, it's going to buy us.
Evaluating those different options.
I don't have time to go through.
No, I understand that.
Full analysis.
I just wanted to know what we were going to get for seventy-five thousand.
Right. And I will be bringing forth a couple more pump stations, one of which we've got some, a loan for, and the other one, eventually, we're going to need to, to do ourselves. It's a smaller pump station, but it's a hundred thousand dollars to do the engineering for, it's going to be Penachuck Square Pump Station, which desperately needs some upgrades to that. So it wasn't done as part of all of the rest of this, but it, it needs it. So we did get a C W S R F grant, or loan, actually. And we're going to bring that forth for you to consider that in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
I was just thinking the same thing.
Yeah, well, you just got your tax bill. I got mine today.
Oh, sorry. I got mine yesterday, I did. Does anybody have anything further? We do have a motion. Remind me.
Nancy made the motion.
Jennifer, I remember, thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, call the question, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Item number, uh, number three hundred, new business. Number two would be receiving key financial information regarding, excuse me, for the quarter ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Paul.
Good evening.
Make sure that's on, please, Paul.
Just trying to check it.
Okay, I have the first quarter financial report. So first off, we have health insurance as of September thirtieth. Because of the openings that we still have in town, um, we are showing a surplus at this point. We're, we still have seventy-six and a half percent of our budget left, even though we're only a quarter of the way through the year. Hopefully, we'll get up to full staff, we'll fill the open positions, and this will run on budget. But we are experiencing a small amount of annual, annualized savings right now, based on the amount of openings that we have in town.
But before you leave there, it's up a hundred and eighty-three thousand from last year's for this quarter?
That's correct. So we had a eighteen, sixteen percent increase, um, which was less than what the guaranteed maximum rate was going to be. So that was certainly a factor in that. And then also, there are less openings than there were last year, so we have a higher, a higher utilization. Excellent question. And I like how they already have the, the new picture on the website without the beard, Tom, so that's, that's great. Uh, next up is New Hampshire Retirement. Also, we have pretty much the same amount of projected spend so far, about seventy-six and a point six percent. Um, and you can see the percentages there, they're, they're pretty on par with the last two years. We are going to see a decrease, starting July first, of two point two percent overall. The non-union went down the biggest amount, the fire went down a smaller amount, and the police also went down. So there'll be some savings in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, based on the rates going down. It was a two-year actuarial report that was just completed, and we've got our new rates. So we do have some savings in New Hampshire Retirement. That will be offset, of course, by the amount of raises that were in the union contracts and the amount that the non-union received on July first of this year, so. Some good, some bad.
Do you happen to know the percents offhand now that it's down to, that we pay for each of these groups?
No, I, it's on my laptop.
Oh, that's okay, I can find it later on.
So, um, yeah, it's, uh.
It's roughly, I think, eleven, eleven for, um, group one.
Yep.
Thirty-four, thirty-four for fire, and I think it's a little more for police.
Yep, it's right in that ballpark.
It's, it's just something that bugs me, and I like to hear, because I want everybody to hear, because it was criminal what happened. But that's beside the point, so thank you, Paul.
Yes.
Explain what happened. I know what happened, but just generally.
The people running the retirement system, somebody should have gone to jail for it. They invested poorly and didn't do anything to remedy the problem, knew of the problem twenty years before, uh, fifteen years before, still didn't do anything about it, let it go, Fanny and Freddie came, the whole thing collapsed, and now we are on the hook, instead of, the state should be on the hook for all those costs. We shouldn't be having to spend thirty-five to forty percent for a retirement contribution for anybody.
It used to be the state was much more.
Correct, yeah.
And at this, at this point, it's a perfect place to add, this is one of the things that impact our tax, our property taxes, when the state downshifts costs that it's responsible for to us. So we may see this in our tax bills as the town costs, but it's really a state cost that we had nothing to do with, that we get stuck with. So I just, it's so important for, when people are so frustrated, and I hear you, but really understanding why those numbers are like they are, we have to recognize that property taxes are the bank for the state right now. And that's, that's why we're saying what we're saying.
More so than it used to be.
Correct.
You gonna jump on too? I appreciate it.
No, I'm not going to jump on. I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you accurate, accurate numbers. Because I, I just was able to pull them up. So for this fiscal year, July first to June thirtieth, it's thirteen point five-three percent for employees, nineteen point six-four percent for teachers, police are at thirty-one point two-eight percent, and fires at thirty point three-five percent. Starting July first, for the next two bienniums, employees drop down to twelve point seven-five percent, teachers are at nineteen point two-three percent, police are going to be at thirty point nine-five percent, and fire is going to be at twenty-nine point one-five percent.
A slight decrease.
So it's a slight decrease in, in the rates going forward for the next two bienniums. But there is still a big funding gap that they do have to come up with. It was four billion dollars, um, a couple of last year. I didn't, I haven't seen the latest, uh, report from the, um, N H R S, but last year was over four billion dollars. That was the gap that they have unfunded.
Still.
Still. But with the investments doing well, hopefully, they'll, they'll, they'll close the gap a little bit.
They're hoping to have it fully funded by twenty forty. That's their goal.
Geez, twenty forty. We won't have to worry about that.
We won't have to worry about that.
I'll be eighty-three. Seems like it's right around the corner.
Um, next up, we have overtime. This is a cause for concern. Police and fire, with the amount of openings they have in their department, their, their run rates are, are over budget. The, at this point, we're looking at an annualized overage of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three forty-six, three seventy-one, to be exact. But as the recruitment and the retention efforts continue, we hope to get these positions filled, and that will help mitigate the, the overtime.
Which me, brings me to another thing. If we have to really look at these hours, these overtime hours throughout the night, you know, the midnight, well, whatever it is, I don't even know what, I just have to see some, some statistics, some graphing of how these things are running. And if we can stop pulling overtime from midnight till six in the morning, or whatever it might be, it would be beneficial. Because that's, these are big numbers. And I know there's making up on the other end to a degree with.
But, but you're, you're trading straight time for time and a half here. You're losing ground.
No, I, right, but I mean, there's, there's a little makeup, but it's still, it's huge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but.
Yeah.
I would still be rather paying straight time than time and a half.
And that's where we're hoping to have fully staffed in, in fire right now. We have one opening, um, and we have one gentleman out on workers' comp. So we're covering those two shifts by shifts, staffing to eleven on overtime. We've had some workers' comp, we, at one point, we had three firefighters out on workers' comp, that we were covering their three shifts with. So that was about sixty thousand dollars, which inflates the, the overtime usage for, for this first quarter. Working with the fire chief, we're working on a bunch of different things and looking at how he's going to curtail the overtime and, and what, what is being, what is being spent and utilized. Also, Paul, you want to go into the, what you do every month for?
Yeah, exactly. So, um, we do monitor it closely. We apprise the, the fire chief and the police chief of exactly what their run rate is and what it's projected to be. So they're, they're fully aware, they know that, you know, there might be, might get to a point, February, March, April, as the year starts ending, where they're going to have to decrease spending in other areas to offset what they're over in the overtime, because obviously, they're, they're not allowed to overspend their budgets. So we do monitor that on a monthly basis.
Excellent.
And they're fully aware with the projection, where they're at. And month to month, the projections are within a few thousand dollars.
So the, the actions that you and the chief are talking about, do we expect to see impacts in Q two spend rate? When do we expect to see results?
Q three, Q three. Q three mostly, because Q two is two-thirds over. So we'll start seeing something, hopefully, we, we can get this in place, and we'll start seeing some in December and then Q three.
That's just what I was going to ask, Andy, that what, are there actions being contemplated now to be instituted if this continues?
Yeah, there are actions, they're looking at it. They're fully aware that they're going to have to cut back, so, but, uh, they're looking more of some, for some Q three. I'm a firm believer of man, not mandating people in on overtime.
Overtime.
Um, and we got to look at that. And that's something we need to study. If we're mandating people in, then I don't want that. Because that just creates other havoc, because those people probably had something going on that day already, and now they got to change their plan.
It really disrupts your life.
Disrupts their lives. And I'm not a big fan of mandating overtime. And in case of emergencies, a different situation, but just to mandatory somebody, to have somebody there on the shift, is, is one of those deals that we are talking to the chiefs about.
Have we gotten to that point? I mean, are we forcing now?
There has been some mandatory overtimes. So.
The next overtime slide is, once the laptop complies, there we go. It just breaks out police and communications, highway and solid waste, just to give it more of a perspective. Getting the blue circle here. There we go. And then general government and other departments, obviously, the lot lesser dollar impact.
You're going to ask who the purple is, right?
It's not, this is only a few thousand dollars, so.
It's general government.
That was general.
It's just a small spike of two thousand dollars in the budget, so, yeah.
It did, it did jump out, Abby.
It did jump out, yeah.
Well, go back to that slide for a second, Paul.
Easy for you to say. There it is.
There you go. So, you know, that was in the twenty-twenty-one, that was COVID-ish time.
Ah, that's right.
So the other departments, which are everything but solid waste and highway and communications. So that was, uh, you know, talent court, task collector, that's, uh, community development, that was DPW admin, you know, all those other departments, and that was during the COVID time period. So have people working, covered with overtime.
Seems like all departments have recovered from the, the COVID spike, except one.
True, true. And if you look here in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, general government was not at its highest point, but that's when we also hired the I T manager and put it on salary versus hourly. So that cut down overtime greatly, because we expanded the department, and so that we had other gentlemen as well. So that helped with reducing the general government, albeit a small three thousand dollar-ish decrease at, from its peak, but it's stuff that we look at, and we try to make that through all other departments too, when we look at it.
Come on, here we are. Uh, departmental summary, um, pretty much everyone is on budget in regards to their total budget, as Andy pointed out, you know, the, the offset of the regular salaries and the overtime salaries. Solid waste is showing with thirty-two percent of the budget left. That's because we issue P O for their contractual services for the whole year. Same thing with welfare, we paid all the social services upfront. That's about eighty-three thousand dollars, so that's why it shows that there's only forty-four percent left. But, um, welfare, just had a couple of, uh, new homeless people that they're dealing with, so we might see an uptick with, with that. The director has been cautiously optimistic, because the people weren't coming. We know that the homeless are out there, but they're not accessing services for one reason or another, and we're going, we might see an uptick with that. And then, of course, the, um, the bonding and the parking wrecks revolving. Parking wrecks, um, they have a majority of their costs, obviously, in the summer, fall, so we'll start seeing that. And then they issue also some of their contracts too for the year, is that correct, Paul?
Yes, but it's mostly because of where they were with the dicap.
That's right, the dicap, yeah. Any questions on departmental summary?
What about highway? It's at fifty-one percent?
Yeah, they have a lot of things that, contracts that they encumber at the beginning of the year that carry, so there, it already shows the spend, it's just, you know, it's locked in, they can't spend those monies.
A lot of highway too, a lot of, the, the majority of that highway budget is based on, um, based on equipment and road infrastructure and paving and things of that sort.
It's just a matter of where we put it throughout the year.
Yeah, right, exactly. So when they buy it, well, she was just in here last week, our last meeting for three trucks, one was two, almost two hundred thousand dollars, that's, once, once we got the approval, there's the P O, comes in as funding, there's the P O and things of that sort. So that's what's incorporated in their budget as well.
But doesn't that money come out of capital reserves and not show up as part of the departmental?
No, no, it, it comes in through the department and gets funded through the department. We, it comes out of capital reserves, but it comes through as, as funding from the department. And because we tie up those monies in a purchase order, it shows as being spent.
And this is a slide that just, um, to Andy and Finley's point about the regular wages, so you can see that we're showing, you know, surplus in regular wages because of the, the amount of openings we have in the town at this time, between police, fire, highway. amount of openings we have in the town at this time, between police, fire, highway, waste, solid waste disposal. So typically, we'd be with seventy-five percent of our budget left, but we're showing just under seventy-nine percent.
Which is not far off.
It's not far off, but it's substantial when you're talking, you know, almost sixteen million dollars. But it helps offset the overage in the, in the overtime.
So three percent of sixteen million, how much are you saying that we're, we have extra left over? It's four and a half?
Three percent of sixteen, yeah. Yep, four hundred and eighty. And then on to revenue. Interest, the rates, even though the feds have, had made one cut and just recently made another one, they do have a couple of more projected cuts. We still are above budget so far this year. Building permits, post-pandemic, those are finally coming back down to normal. We did adjust the budget accordingly. And auto registrations are above budget by, by four percent. People are still buying new cars. And with the interest rates coming down a little bit, that's only going to go a little higher, so.
So these percentages are percentages of the budget as income already?
Correct.
So that's anything over twenty-five is good?
Correct.
Thank you. So building permits are off a little bit?
Yes.
I remember when we had zero interest.
Oh, the pandemic. That was painful for a lot of communities, the investment income. Yep.
Yeah, that went on for years though.
It went on for a long time.
Mm-hmm. And here's just a graph splitting out just the interest and the building permits. And then the last slide is questions and comments.
Looks like we're in a reasonable place. Do you have any questions?
It's hard to project on one quarter, but it looks like we're, we're in reasonable shape at this point.
I would concur.
And we have to keep an eye on it, because like you said, it's the first quarter. So we have to keep our eye on our spending. We can't, you know, go hog wild, so to speak. We, we have to keep the reins tight. It just baffles me, and I know I've been saying this since I used to do these presentations, auto registrations.
I know, it's amazing.
It just baffles me.
We're waiting.
It baffles me. And we have a big boost now because of the apartments that we got in town. So we're starting to see that play through some of our numbers, but that isn't making up the total increase that we're, we're seeing.
But they do have a lot of leasing that we didn't used to have either.
Yeah, but I, I haven't seen a lot of brand-new twenty-day templates. What I've been seeing lately, and it's wild, because I walked in with a gentleman the other day, is that people are buying their vehicles, but they're not buying them in the state of New Hampshire. This gentleman bought a pickup truck, GMC pickup truck from Georgia, because it was, with the flight down and driving it back up home, it was significantly cheaper for him than to buy it locally. So that's what I've been seeing a lot.
Interesting.
And I've been seeing a lot of Massachusetts runners. And what I mean by Massachusetts runner is that somebody buys their car in Massachusetts, they'll drive it up to Merrimack so that the person can register their car in Merrimack and sign it. In Massachusetts, when you buy a car, the dealership runs to the DMV and gets your plates and registers your car for you as part of the, part of your sales price. Here, it's different, so they'll run them up here. So we're starting to see that happening, but I'm not seeing a lot of twenty-day plates. I see some, but not like before. And the vehicles that we're seeing the twenty-day plates on are not, you know, hundred thousand dollar Porsches or Mercedes and things of that sort, you know, they're, they're, they're still expensive vehicles, because every vehicle's expensive now. But it just baffles my mind and, and, you know, projecting the auto registrations is just, and I'm not the only one, the auditors say the same thing. They see it all across the board. Every community they audit, they see registrations for vehicles, so. But we are in good financial condition. We are actually in great financial condition, but we have to keep an eye on it and keep the, the reins, keep our, keep our hands on the reins, because we could be at zero percent interest real quick with the feds again. And that's, you know, six hundred thousand dollars of our estimated revenue. And building permits, while they are slowing down, we expected that, they usually pick up a little bit in March, April, and May timeframe as well. So we're seeing, well, we'll see if that plays out a trend. And if that doesn't play out a trend, that, that's also another sign that the economy is slowing down, because when people get their tax returns, that's what they usually do, home improvements. And the mortgage rate I checked today, Paul and I, Paul was in my office, we checked today, and a thirty-year mortgage is seven percent. So those aren't coming down. So people aren't selling their homes to move into a different home, so they'll be doing those renovations on their properties, because it's easier to invest in their own home than unless they're moving out of the area. So there are a lot of factors that we, we have to keep our eyes on to move forward and, and to look at, but we are in good financial shape.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Next, item number four hundred, new business. The council discussed the development of a pay scale to include steps based on performance for non-union, non-contractual employees. And Tom, and Nancy, and Andy, who else worked on this with you?
I'm Nancy.
Andy did.
Andy did, okay. Hope you wouldn't have to make, so they worked with Paul and Sharon on this for, for quite a few months. And we have it in our bag in the head. Hopefully everybody had an opportunity to peruse it.
Yeah, read it. Good evening. This topic has been discussed several times at town council retreats over the years. Matter of fact, as of, as of late June twenty-fourth retreat, the council included it as part of one of their goals for the upcoming year. In September of two thousand twenty-three, a small committee was formed to include myself, Sharon Marunich, Councilor Healy, Councilor Koenig, and Vice Chair Harrington. The committee had a goal: to standardize the philosophy across all town employee groups as to how wage increases are provided, to provide a cost of living increase to help employees keep up with the rising cost of inflation, reduce the number of openings and training costs by having a pay schedule that increases pay, to recognize value to the town by having experienced and trained employees in positions. So when we met, we, we used that as our goal going forward. Tonight, I am presenting a performance pay plan, say that twenty times quick, or what I like to call triple P. We are proposing this as a compensation plan that is based on performance. The, the plan develops an equitable method to compensate non-union employees similar to contractual employees. The plan is based on performance outcome and reflects a grade and step system. This may look familiar to some of you, because we've implemented with the Teamsters contract last year, as well as the library was instituting this pay plan for their employees in the upcoming year as well, which was discussed at the last meeting. The non-union current pay scale is comprised of twenty-five grades. Within each grade, we have a low, medium, and high range. When a non-union employee is hired, there is very little movement from where they are placed on the grade. In addition, there is no mechanism to move up on the wage range. The council and staff had several discussions how to get employees movement. We tried not increasing the top of the scale to create movement when the cost of living was loaded in. This, however, only created another problem with the pay scale, that we were not as competitive with other communities. The new triple P plan reduces the number of grades from twenty-five to fourteen. In addition, there are ten steps in each grade, and there is a two and a half percent between each step. And employees' performance dictates whether or not they move up a step based on their annual evaluation. The annual evaluation is made up of ten categories. Each category has subcategories that employee would be rated on. The rating for each category is between a one and a five. A perfect score would be a fifty. To move up a step from steps one through six, the employee would have to receive a score of twenty-nine to thirty-four rating. Steps seven and eight, an employee would have to get a score between thirty-five and forty-six. And steps nine and ten, employee would have to receive a score between forty-seven and fifty. Once again, based on performance. This is a performance pay plan. I believe this will allow not only our current employees, but future hires to see their potential of wage increases while in the position. I also believe that it will help the town attract and retain employees, because now they have goals that they can attain and look for. We compete with surrounding communities for the same qualified employees, and some of those communities offer a step and pay scale system. Some use time and grade, while others use performance to move up the scale. If approved, I will be bringing an implementation, implementation plan forward during the budget process. Finally, we had a couple of title modifications during our review of, on, of each of the non-union positions. We are recommending changing the name secretary to administrative assistant, and account clerk too, who work in the town clerk tax collector's office as assistant town clerk tax collectors. While placing members or positions on the grades one through fourteen, we used a number of factors while doing this. We looked at current openings, we looked at surrounding communities. We are always getting questions from other communities about pay scale, so we use that as well, to try to identify the proper place on the grade scale for each position. So this wasn't just done willy-nilly. We, we took into information from surrounding communities, communities we use all the time, and we tried to place individuals on where they belong on the pay scale, meaning their job titles. In closing, I'd like to reiterate that this is a performance-based pay plan, is based on performance outcomes, and develops the equ, an equitable method of compensation and opportunities for non-union employees similar to our contractual employees. I'm willing to answer any questions about the pay plan.
Thank you, Paul. Everybody okay?
Thanks to everybody who worked on this. I know that's a, it's a huge task. Do current employees' salaries fall in the right grades and steps on this? And if not, are you going to adjust their pay rate at this point?
We, we will, that will be part of the plan, implementation plan that I bring forward. We do have a couple of employees that are under their pay scale. However, that position should be in that pay range. One in particular, we have an employee making about eighty thousand dollars a year. Similar positions go between eighty-five and a hundred thousand dollars. We put them on the pay band that goes from eighty-six to, eighty-two to a hundred and six thousand dollars. That person would be, once implemented, would be put on step one and given that money as well. It's a, we would still have to fund cost of living increases, and that would play out throughout this whole pay wage scale. But once again, you do not step if you do not perform.
If you what?
If you do not perform, you do not step. You have to meet those standards in order to get a step.
So you would still have cost of living increases, or you will, you will review this, like, on an annual basis to adjust their, adjust the amounts?
Coming forward, what we do is during the budget season. One, one thing is, is that cost of living would take effect July first. However, a step increase would not take effect until October. That being said, is the reason why we're doing that is because all evaluations come into human resources. And we, for the first couple of years, we would like to review those before it gets brought out, because we'd like to make sure that people are being evaluated and how they're being evaluated, because this is going to be a learning experience for our department. It's, even though we've been doing evaluations all along for these employees, it's never been tied to a pay plan.
And it's never been that detailed.
And it's never been that detailed, because we really drilled down on some of the scrub categories as well to give them quality. And the other thing is, is there's a new category, and the category is called goals. Not everybody always had goals. Now everybody will have goals, and goals attainment as part of a rating factor. So there's some things that we would have to look at for the first couple of years to make sure everybody's following through, and then that's why the steps would take place in October for the remaining nine months and the first quarter of the following year. And it'll be brought forward.
It's, it's good that, I think, that they do keep up with it for a period, Tom, a couple of years, whatever, because people do potentially evaluate differently, and Paul had alluded to, and Sharon told me of a couple of comparisons. One was a harder score, if you will, and so we have to have consistency among those things in order for it to work properly.
And we need to look at it to make sure that everybody's rating on the same, the same basis.
Yep.
Inter-rater reliability.
Correct. Aye, aye, aye.
Well, I think that's the, it's consistent application of the performance.
Right.
And the only way to do that is to have a consistent person to evaluate it and be able to assess, and if there's a discrepancy, then you have a conversation.
Correct.
So it's a good idea.
Correct. And, and, you know, department heads, like I said, they have been rating people. Now they would, it actually is tied to performance. So. And we, we, one other thing is that, you know, in the private sector, I could have six people working for me in my division. They all basically might have the same job description. For our non-union employees, we very rarely have more than one or two people in a department with that same job description. So the most that I have in the single job description is my town clerk tax collector's office. I have four, or four now assistant town clerk tax collectors that have the same job description. I could see the rating there, looking at that and looking at them and, and moving, and bringing that in and looking at it with the department head on how they rate those four individuals. Other departments might only have one or two. So we looked at limiting the number of outstanding, so to speak, or fives that you can give to a person. It really doesn't work out well, because I have five distinct positions in my division, and they can all be outstanding doing their job. So to put limitations on the number of outstandings or number of fives you can give to individuals in a certain category, we talked about it. It just wouldn't work out because of the diversity of, of the jobs. And I believe there's sixty-nine total employees of the town out of two hundred that are in the non-union category, outside of the library.
How many?
Sixty-nine, I believe, outside of the library, but sixty-nine, maybe seventy now.
How, how, how have we determined cost of living raises?
Cost of liv-
And do we, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, and I was going to say, and do we follow that every year, or do we adjust on our own desire as a council, putting forth the recommended percentages?
What we've been doing in the past, the past four or five years right now, is basically whatever the union gets, non-union gets for cost of living, because that's what's negotiated. However, the unions also have steps built into their pay scales. So while they're getting a cost of living increase, they were also getting, some of them were getting step increases as well, whereas non-union was just getting cost of living increases. So if you got put on the range, I might have hired a purchasing agent, for instance, that had little experience. So I put them at the low end of the range. As they got that experience over the years, they never moved from that low end of the range.
Because of the no mechanic.
Whereas if, if this position was in a union, they'd get the cost of living increase, and they might get a step, or two steps, or three steps, and move up their pay scale. And that's the equitable portion of this pay plan, is that it's based on performance, number one, foremost, but it's also equitable, that there is a goal, that if I do well, the owner gets put back on the employee to do well, to want to succeed, to want to be that outstanding employee that gets all, all fives and all ten, all, all ten categories. So they get their pay raise, and they get their step. And that's really what we're looking at, is, is to, to get those, get the people to excel, excel, and move forward, and have a goal to move forward. But it's based on the employee's performance, and the employee can, whether or not they want to get a, a step increase, it's up to them.
Let me do.
Go ahead.
So did you tell me on the cost of living how we come to that, or are we going to?
Well, usually we, 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 it's been based on union for the most part, and the union cost of living, we've.
Part of the contractual.
Contractual, yeah. In the past, the town manager said, okay, it's three percent in the union contracts, because that's all I'm giving you, or two and a half percent or two percent. And that was the cost of living that was given to everybody. So.
And that's fine.
There is not a, it's not like.
Locked in in a situation where the cost of living went up three percent, we only did three percent.
No, we do not, we do not look at the CPI. We try to look at CPI. We try to look at what other towns are giving for raises, and what other towns have given for raises in their contracts over the year. and what other towns have given for raises in their contracts over the year. And we try to formulate what's really happening with, with cost of living.
As long as we're not locked into-
We're not locked, we're not locked into a formula where you gotta take ninety percent of CPI minus twenty percent of outgoing XYZ gross national product. No, we're not locked into anything like that.
I think, just a couple of things, I want to be able to generalize a statement about this when we worked on it. Really, one of the goals was trying to equalize the treatment of employees contractual, non-contractual. That was one of the major outstanding goals. The other was to also provide an opportunity for growth. You know, you can grow, but you got no compensation for it or no motivation for it. So I think that you need to understand from the people who worked on it, the group, that those were two of the major things. But we also understood there needed to be, it needed to be performance outcomes, which really doesn't exist now formally. And we made sure to attach a very detailed performance outcome evaluation to any movement within that scale, so there's a direct connection. You don't move up after you have some timing, because the first couple of steps are timing, without demonstrating perform adequate, not only adequate, but good performance. So I think you need to know that that was part of the philosophy of the group that worked on this.
And even those first couple of steps, you still need to perform.
That's correct.
Because if you don't, if you-
It's not automatic.
It's not automatic. If you, you get a twenty-eight on, on theirs, which, a twenty-eight is, is hard to get because you'd be on a performance improvement plan on average. But if you get a twenty-eight, you don't get a step. And there's other things that we factored in too. Is that if there's discipline in a file, you're not eligible for a step that year. And there, we also factored in, well, what happens if somebody goes to school and gets their education or their degree? A reward might be to reward them with a step.
But at the same time, there would be concurrent increase in expectations.
Correct.
Because if you were educated, if you were provided money, first of all, which we have, but you acquired even a certification, the demonstrated increased skill set, then that should be able to be rewarded as well. But again, there's an expectation of a change in performance advancement.
Right. And that's, that's, you know, it's, it's, and I keep harping on this, it's the triple P, it's the Performance Payment Plan. It's all about performance. And, and performance outcomes, as Councilor Harrington has said. It's, that's where we're looking at, and that's where the group felt that to go and move forward.
Did you have anything?
Yeah, I just have a quick question that's kind of around this, but I guess not around this at the same time. In regard to the positions that we've been trying to fill, that we've had a hard time filling, have we looked at the pay scale for those positions as well as like the job title? And how we compare to other towns in that regard to incentivize people to apply for those?
Yes, without naming names or positions. I had a situation where we were having a hard time filling a couple of positions. A lot of turnover in the department. And we looked at surrounding communities and looked at where they were on the pay scale. And we, Sharon and I looked at this, and we first brought it forward, and we've made four or five iterations of it, that we have moved positions up a grade or up two grades to match what's going on. So in that case where there was a lot of openings, we actually moved those positions up a grade so that we could be more competitive with surrounding communities that we can offer, offer as a starting range for the position. And the other thing is, just because they're in that pay range of, of start is one to ten, if we go out for a position of XYZ bottle washer, and the person has seven years of experience, they might not start at Step One. They might start at Step Five. So this plan also builds into, if we get qualified people, we don't have to start them at Step One. We can start them, which we, you know, we pick a spot on the range and say, this is where you're at. This way, they see where they're at and they can progress from there. And it's transparent. That's the other thing, it's, it's going to be transparent. When I got hired twenty years ago, I know, a long time ago now. One of my first questions to Sharon after she was, we were discussing salary, was, okay, do you have a pay scale? Because I came from the government where we had a pay scale, where you got steps and everything. I said, so I see that you have grades, do you have a pay scale? And Sharon said, well, we used to have a pay scale, but we've going to this low, medium, and high. So like, my question was, well, how do you get from low to medium to high? Growth in the position. So at that time, it was, this is where we're at, and you get cost of living increases, and you might get a wage adjustment with it. Of course, I've been here twenty years, so I guess it worked out for me.
You got a wage adjustment, just because you could change your job.
I must have, must have been okay.
But there was, there was other reasons why, when talking with Sharon and Chief Mulligan, who's hired the interim town manager at the time who hired me, it was, we, I saw other opportunities. And that's why I came to Merrimack, because I saw the other opportunities that could be afforded to me. Meaning Bob Levan, who was my first boss here, he told me he didn't have more than five years left. So I saw advancement if I did well. And then I'm fortunate enough that the council saw that Assistant Town Manager and now Town Manager, so. But, you know, people can look at this now and say, okay, these are my opportunities afforded to me. A lot of people don't want to advance, they don't want management positions. They just want to come to work and do their job and get paid for doing a good job and take pride in their work. And where will I be in five years from now? Where will I be in seven years from now? And this is really what, what it, what it helps out with that retention and bringing in new employees.
And I think it's important to point out that, you know, maybe the first five steps are relatively simple to move up because you've now got the experience of those first five years, assuming you started at Step One. But to get to those higher levels, you really have to be performing at a higher level. And those last couple of steps, you have to be performing at an excellent level. And you can only drop below excellent in one or two of these ten categories. And so we've tried to make sure that it's graded appropriately, that, that people can be rewarded for what they learn about being on the job for the first several years. But after that, if they want to get further along in the program, they have to actually put more effort into being a proactive part of that organization and do, you know, exemplary work and not just the same job for ten years or something like that.
Right. And not just show up.
Not just show up, yeah.
Not just show up.
Yeah, I, I sat with Paul and Sharon for a while last night, trying to poke holes in this, and I, I thought it was a pretty well-thought-out plan. The one concern I had is, you know, how do we prevent a manager from going and giving all of his employees excellence? Because, you know, quote-unquote, he wants to take care of his employees. You know, I think it's a good point that, one, these are very small populations that we're talking about. So we're not going to have a manager that goes and puts ten people in for excellence, and, and we got an issue on our hand. And I really liked the idea for the first couple of years that Town Manager, HR, will be reviewing these and making sure that we are evaluating employees fairly across the board. Because one of the biggest things, you saw this in the military a lot, right? You were held to one standard, but somebody else that was a different raider, he had a complete different standard. And, but at the same time, your packets go to a central board, and you're competing against each other, but you're being rated by two different standards. So I really like the idea that there's an arbitrator to come and say, hey, we're not doing right by this employee because we're holding them to a different standard than over in another department. So, again, I, I tried to poke holes, I tried to find, you know, what are the things we're not thinking about? I thought it was a very well-thought-out plan.
Cool. I'm with you, Andy. My concern, I was talking to Paul this afternoon about it, and Sharon, is the runaway freight train. When, you know, when there's inconsistencies in the, and, and I don't know if it should be done even more than a year or two, but I definitely like looking for that consistency, the equal ratings through the different departments of, or, you know, of how we, what they all mean, what the rankings mean and so on. But, but I would like, I don't know, it doesn't have to be talked about tonight necessarily, but I'd like some surveying or something done after a year or two, just to see how it is all falling into place.
We, we can do that. Like I said, we get a lot of wage surveys throughout the year from different groups. So we keep that in mind of our wage scale, if our wage scale is within, you know, realm, as well as, we could ask the department heads and their employees, what do they think of this system? I've run this now by the department heads three times. And I've given it to them one, and I just said, here you go, read it real quick, let me know what you think. And then we discussed, what about performance? And then we discussed, I just discussed it now. And I said, okay, comments, concerns, what do you guys think about this? And to a T, all the department heads said, it's well overdue, well overdue. We need something that the non-union people on an equal playing field with our contractual versus our non-contractual.
You know, I think it's going to be extra work, not only for you two, obviously, but for the supervisors. But I also think it's a tool that enhances communication. Because when you're there to clarify expectations, well, I think this, because I remember getting evaluations, of course, it seemed like employees underestimate how good they are, or they really overestimate. And someone thinks they should all be fives, which would be at the top of the scale. And you had to communicate, okay, why do you think that? Well, I'm doing this, well, that's your job. Versus someone as, you know, I only gave myself a two. Wait a minute, you've done this, you've done this, you've done this. So I think that really enhances the communication and also makes it clear about expectations. So I think any concrete performance tool enhances that. And there is no doubt that we will find over time, especially after the first two years, how things might need to be tweaked. Although I think the tool is really good. But there's always tweaking that you'll find out. Or maybe there needs to be an instructional manual or something, but that's some of the things that will happen over time, in my opinion.
And by using, implementation, using this rating period of May two thousand twenty-five as the first test period for department heads, because I have a plan in play with the budget, but I gotta see how that plays out financially. I don't want to burden the taxpayers, overburden the taxpayers. But I'm hoping that I could use this first year as a test. Here's your new rating, give this out to the employees, explain to them what this means, explain to this performance plan, pay plan. Here you go, this is, now use these ratings, and we can come back and look at the ratings and say, hey.
It'll be a transition.
It's going to be a transition. First of all, like I said, some people have never seen goals. And so when I, when I was in finance, I used to ask my employees, give me two goals. I want two professional goals and one personal goal. And some of those individuals were like, very hard to find goals. And I said to one of them, one of your goals could be update your office desk manual that anybody in your department could come in, pull out the manual, and pay an accounts payable. And that could be a goal. They just don't understand what a goal is.
That's all.
But I also want a professional development in there too for these people. So what, what is your career goal? Do you want to go for an Excel class? Do you want to go for education? Do you just want to? And, and some say, I'm happy. I'm happy in my job, I just want to do my job, okay?
And that's okay.
And that's okay too, because you need those. But you also, it, it, I can't say it enough, this is based on performance, and it's based on the individual's performance. So an individual controls their own destiny.
So what do you need from us?
I need you to approve the performance plan policy, please.
Pay plan policy?
Pay plan policy. The PPP, P three, or triple P.
Performance Play Plan Policy. Say that. Whoever's making that motion, I want you to repeat it three times.
Oh, God, then I'm not going to do it then. I motion for the Town Council to approve the performance plan policy provided to the Town Council this evening, or presented to the Town Council this evening.
And I'll make second?
Motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Nancy Murphy.
Do you need anything more than that?
No, that's all. Any further discussion on the motion? Someone will call the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero.
And thank you to you guys, that was a lot of work.
Right. And I wanted to say, I was always thankful, but I wasn't participating. I had forgotten Barbara Haley, I knew there was a third one at some point. But thank you for all you guys have done, and, and you and Tom as well, Nancy. It was, I was glad I could avoid it and just learn at the end what it was all about.
Well overdue, thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank, thank you very much. I'm sure the employees will appreciate this.
They will, I know.
I want to say thank you for the employees too, the non-union, non-contractual employees.
Very good.
Thank you for your support, councilors.
All right. Approval of minutes, we have November seventh, two thousand twenty-four minutes.
I only had one thing I noticed in it that I wanted to suggest as a change. On page six of eight, line thirty-one, it, the sentence says, keeps the mix hot and pliable as they go from job site to job site. And I guess that's correct, I misread it as I was reading it before, so. Hot and pliable, yeah, never mind. So that's the other thing?
Jennifer had something.
Jennifer, go ahead. Let's see, on page two, line thirty-seven, it talks about Yvette sharing that she will continue term as president. It should be President of the G. Milks Consortium Board of Directors, just so it's clear that that's not President of the library.
Or anything else?
Very good, very good.
Anything else, Jennifer?
Let's see, on six, line thirty-four, it says, request to withdraw. Should that be withdrawn? And that's also on the next page, line ten on page seven. And then on page eight, I accidentally got a promotion to Vice Chair on the first line, motion made by, should be Councilor Jovan.
Excellent.
I think you guys should move that real, real quick, Nancy.
You get the pay raise with that position too.
Oh, yeah. Where, wait. When did that happen? You owe me a lot of money.
After you vacate that position.
And last one, on page eight, I believe Robert LaRue should be L.
Yes.
Apostrophe H-E-U-R-E.
H-E-U-R-E-U-X, I believe.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, I got it. I know what you're saying, okay, sorry.
What's that, Jennifer?
On page eight, line thirty-one, first word, and, it should be an, A-N, just delete the D.
Wait, say what?
Line thirty-one.
Who came and delivered, an victim or a victim or impact?
An.
Yes, a.
A.
A victim, not an.
That's true.
There we go. A correction of the correction.
I'm just, actually, I'm just looking at the next. That sentence too, on line thirty-two to thirty-three, I'm just wondering if that, she shared that they worked hard.
Preventing and preparing.
Establishments. Having, maybe, maybe the word for, establishments for having, maybe it's establishments having.
Yeah, I would think that.
Yeah, delete the word for, F-O-R, following establishments.
But for and after. For establishments having responsibility around serving alcohol.
Right, so take that for out as well.
The second for out.
Right. She shared.
Yes.
For establishments.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And based on that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Town Council meeting minutes for Thursday, November seventh, with corrections.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Nancy Murphy. If there's no further discussion on the minutes, I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero. Thank you. Comments from the press, seeing none. Comments from the public, seeing none. Comments from the council?
My turn?
If you'd like.
Um, I just, I-
Um, I just, I, I have a couple of things I want to say. Uh, how much I've enjoyed working on the town council and enjoyed my time in Merrimack. But, uh, you probably realize that by my stating it that way, I'm gonna be effectively resigning from the town council effective the end of the year. Um, I've sold my house and I'm moving down to Louisiana to be with my family. Uh, my sisters had some issues, my brothers had some issues, and it's just a, a wonderful opportunity for us to be able to move down there. And, uh, while I miss Merrimack dramatically, uh, I've been here for a long time now, uh, and enjoyed my time here a lot. Um, it's just appropriate for, for me and my family to move down there and be closer to my brothers and sisters, uh, as we age. And, uh, I'll, I'll probably continue to work, uh, remotely for a while before finally retiring. But, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you folks, uh, for the time that I've had. I will still be here. Uh, will probably be moving in January. Um, but I figured it was appropriate for me to announce that I was going to be retiring, uh, effective at the end of the year, to give you guys an opportunity to decide on how to find somebody to replace me for the rest of my term, or the rest of the time until the next election.
Till, till April.
Yep.
First of all, we're not gonna be replacing you.
True story.
With the years of knowledge that you bring, it's gonna be very difficult. But I'm also happy for you because you're going to miss the winters.
I won't be missing the summers, but.
Oh, that's also true. That's also true. But we have you until then, so.
Till the end of the year.
That's right, so.
Yeah. How many years have you been on the council, Tom?
I-
Close to twenty, I bet.
Don't know, but close to twenty, yeah. There was a couple of years when I was off, but, uh, but between being on the, the Board of Selectmen with you-
Yeah.
And transitioning from there to the town council.
Had to be more than twenty years.
It had to be on the order of twenty years or so.
I think it's just about.
We've been together, except for one year, I think, since I've been here. Tom, Tom, Tom's always been one. And he was one year before me, so it's about twenty. But you also spent a lot of time on the Budget Committee.
Well, I was on the Budget Committee before I got on the Town Council, and before we got rid of the Budget Committee through the charter amendment. Uh, and then I was also on the Planning Board as a member, as a regular member while I was not on the Town Council. So I've been involved with the town for quite a few years now, between-
You were a mid-child.
-planning building committee that you're on.
Huh? You must have been a mid-child.
A mid-child, yeah.
Mayor child.
Mayor child. Um, since ninety-five, I've been involved in one form or another on, on a council or a, a committee in town. So it's been fun, it's been great. I, uh, I will miss New England. Born and raised in Louisiana and moving back there. So after fifty years, I'm closing that loop and going back home.
You're gonna get your twang back?
Of course I am. It's just gonna take a while.
Exactly.
Well, I've, I remember meeting Tom way back in the later nineties, and, um, uh, it's been a pleasure hanging with you all these evenings and doing everything we've done for a while. Um, I, Lori's, I had notes to myself before I left this evening, and I told Tom that Lori had seen my notes and was pretty crushed that Tom was leaving us. And, um, and I don't think she worked a lot with you in any regard, but she had held Tom in a very high regard. And, uh, you will definitely be missed, there's no doubt.
Yeah, I, I mean, for as long as I've been in Merrimack, even before I was on the council, to watch count, the town council meetings, I just can't imagine the town council without a Tom Koenig. It's-
I know. I agree.
It's been that way since I moved into this town. So I learned a lot of what I learned from Tom Mahon.
Mm-hmm.
And from all of you, from Finley, from Nancy, from all, all of you people working with you. And, and I don't know how many town managers I've worked with over the years. It's been, it's been quite a few.
Three or four.
Does that mean we should be looking for Tom?
We, we're gonna look for Tom, which we'll bring that up, uh, at another meeting, what, uh, the process.
What I could do is, um, because time is of the essence, um, we can next week go out with a thirty-day, uh-
Notification?
Release asking for people to submit resumes and qualifications. And, uh, with that, if we go out next week, we'll get them in around the twentieth of December-ish, and then we could try to figure out, uh, when we can hold a meeting so that the town council can interview people. And then you can appoint probably at a special meeting, uh, January fourth, uh, to appoint a member of the, for the town council. So we would have to work out the dates, and I'll have that as on the twel- on December fifth's agenda to go over everything. But I think time is of the essence, and we can do a press release. We have one, we just have to change the names and the dates and send it out, um, to, for, for at least starting to get people out there. And we'll put it on social media, and we'll put it up. And then discuss the procedure of when you want to hold the interviews and things of that sort at the next meeting. But we have, th- there, there are guidelines within the charter. And, and when I say this, that's why I'm saying the time is of the essence, because there's guidelines within the charter that allow twenty-one days after resignation, the position has to be filled. So Tom's last day on December thirty-first, you have until January twenty-first to fill it. That's great. However, there's a provision in the charter that says no appointment ninety days before the next election.
So that's-
So the next election is April ninth, backing off, you know, you got March ninth, February ninth, well, really, you get two extra days because February only has twenty-eight days. So backing off, January ninth is right around that ninetieth day. So you would have to appoint before January ninth because of the way the charter is written. So, and we're coming into budget season.
Exactly.
It's always fun as well. So that's why I'm saying we should get this out sooner than later, the press release. And then we can talk about it on the fifth of how you want to fill the position and when you want to do your interviews.
You're gonna miss budget.
Oh, damn. That was his most favorite time of year. He's going to go on and watch us just to be able to say, thank God I'm not there.
I have a feeling that was written in the purchase and sale.
Nick, Nick is blending, taking his phone and making sure that app comes up every time we have a meeting.
Don't be texting like Nancy always used to do. No text messages.
I didn't do such things today, Tom.
No, of course not.
Alrighty. Um, you're gonna be missed, Tom, so, uh-
Thank you. Um, and before, I know it's the town council, but would be remiss if we didn't wish the residents of Merrimack a happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
Oh, thank God.
And enjoyment, uh-
We were so overcome with you, we forgot Thanksgiving.
And, and, you know, the start of the holiday season.
It's true.
Peaceful and joyful holiday season.
Yes. Thank you, Paul, for that reminder.
Thank you.
All right. It's a pleasure. We can spend the night if you want.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, thank you, Andy.
Second.
Second by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Seven zero zero. Thank you, everybody. Good night.